Good morning, everyone. It's just a little bit past 9:00 a.m. And welcome to the special meeting of the Glendale City Council for April 30th, 2019. This is our budget study session number one. May we have roll call, please?
Council members, Agajanian?
President.
Devine?
Here.
Garpadian?
I was gonna say good morning here.
Sinanian?
Here.
And good morning.
Mayor Najarian?
Here. Uh, let's go straight to...
We can just read the report for the...
Read the report.
Oh, yes, sir, please.
Agenda for the April 30th, 2019, special public meeting of the City Council is posted on Thursday, April 25th, 2019, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Mr. Mayor and Council, before you is interim Director of Finance regarding Financial Status Report, March 31st, 2019. One is a motion to note and file the Financial Status Report in fiscal year 2018-19, third quarter ended March 31st, 2019. B is resolution appropriating $84,763 in adjustments to the adopted 2018-20 fiscal year budget. Two is interim Director of Finance regarding Budget Study Session One. And two is fiscal year 2019-20 proposed general fund budget and forecast. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Ms. Beers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you for joining us at 9:00 a.m. as we start our journey through the budget for 2019-20. I would like to first and foremost thank all of the departments for being present here today, as well as our Finance Department, led by interim Director of Finance, Michelle Flynn, who has been preparing a budget for all of us to preview for the last few months. And as you all know, because you've all done this a number of times, it does take quite a bit of time to prepare the City of Glendale's budget. This will be the first budget study session of three budget study sessions that will be coming forward during the day, in terms of at 9:00 a.m. And today's budget study session will also be one of the shorter of the three. This is more of a preview of what's happening in 1920, as well as the closeout, as the clerk read into the record for 1819. And then we will have a budget hearing in the evening and adoption beginning of June of the budget. With that, I will ask Michelle Flynn, our interim director, to start with the agenda and give you that preview, and we'll dive right into the slides, and we'll answer questions as they come up. So with that, Michelle Flynn.
Good morning. Thank you, Ms. Beers.
Morning.
As Ms. Beers indicated, this morning, we'll be covering primarily the general fund, and we will first look at our 2018-19 third quarter general fund update, looking at our revenues and resources, departmental expenditures, and we'll give you a short update on our PERS rate stabilization fund, as well as our projected year-end fund balance. And then I'll turn it over to Adriné Asayon, our deputy director in charge of budget, and she will cover the fiscal year 2019-20 proposed general fund budget, as well as our organizational profile, and then we'll lastly wrap up with our calendar for how it looks for the remainder of budget season. So to jump right into our third quarter, as of March 31st of 2019, our estimated revenues are about $133.8 million. This is about 5.5% higher than where we were at the same time last year. The reason these numbers are estimated is, if you recall, we did implement a new financial system, January 1st, so our staff and finance have been working very, very hard prior to implementation, as well as post-implementation, and so we're a little bit behind in some of our tasks to get things updated. So our numbers today that we're presenting to you, we feel confident. We've looked at our actuals through six to seven months' worth of data that we have in the system at this point, and we've done some projections to the third quarter, and then you'll see our projected fund balance for year-end. So they're getting, our accounting staff primarily is getting more up-to-date every moment. I'm getting journal entries constantly that they're posting, so they're almost ready to close February, but we just didn't have March 31st numbers close like we normally do. But our numbers are still estimated and pretty solid. So we, looking at our revenues, like I said, we're a little bit higher than at this point last year, and that's primarily due to a couple of categories coming in a little bit higher, being in our property tax and our sales tax. Again, not counting Measure S, that's just strictly our regular sales tax numbers. And then, and a couple of decreases that we wanted to note, too, is in the UUT, primarily in our telecom for the current fiscal year. And that's why we're making some adjustments for the third quarter in the UUT, and I'll show you those numbers on the next slide. But the telecom industry is changing. People are streaming more with Netflix and Hulu and those types of services versus having the traditional cable and satellite TV like they normally do. So that does impact our UUT revenue. We also have some adjustments in our TOT, and then we had some increases in our revenues from other agencies. That was due to the La Tuna Canyon Fire. Everything else is looking like it's gonna come in as we've forecasted, so on this next slide, on Slide 5, you'll see those adjustments in the second column. We're adjusting down UUT by 1.4 million. The original estimate for UUT, or for telecom, the telecom piece of that $29.8 million was $7.4 million, so we're adjusting it down to $6 million for the year-end. And then in our TOT category, we have an adjustment of $1.1 million. And that's just primarily timing of certain hotels coming online and just revenues not coming in as expected on some of the newer hotels. So overall, our revised resources for the end of the year with the assigned use of fund balance and the unassigned use of fund balance, we're looking at $235,292,000. Moving on to expenditures for the general fund...
Yes, question.
Oh, sorry.
Just a quick question on the TOT.
Sure.
So last year, we estimated that we're going to receive so much from TOT, and we don't have $1.1 million this year?
Correct. We're adjusting that forecast down by 1.1 million.
How much?
Of that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And the total forecast was how much?
The total forecast for UUT was, I'm sorry, for TOT was about $8.6 million of that 16. There's other taxes in that, in that number. So we're adjusting it down.
Eight point six million. Out of 8.6 million, we did not, we did not generate 1.1 million?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, moving on to expenditures. At this point, as of March 31st, all departments are tracking as expected, which means they are at or about 75% of their budget for the current fiscal year. We are at a total of $168.9 million through March 31st. And the one category that you'll see on the next slide is a little bit higher, and that's because of the GSA loan repayment that we receive in one lump sum at the beginning of the fiscal year, and then we move 20% of that to the low and moderate housing fund, all at the same time. So that's why that number's a little bit higher. That's in the transfer out category. So on this slide, on Slide 7, you'll see how all the departments are doing, and a few areas to note here in the column that's marked one-time adjustments at $6.9 million. The majority of that, almost $5 million of that number, was carryovers from the previous fiscal year. So we had some large carryovers with some projects, as well as some contractual services in the various departments that we brought into the current fiscal year so that they, because there were commitments on those monies to be spent. And the remainder is things like in fire, the fire recruit academy of about $800,000, and then some other miscellaneous-type approvals in various departments.
And what you will see in the upcoming fiscal year for 1920, based on the fire academy, that will now be part of their budget, their annual budget, because as you know, and a few council members last year brought it up, why is it that right after we adopt the budget, we bring an adjustment forward for the fire department almost on an annual basis for recruitment purposes, when we know the cost is going to be approximately $800,000 to $1 million? And so when we move forward into the 1920 budget, you will see in terms of an adjustment that will be moving forward for the fire department will be recruitment costs. That's just the cost of operating, operating as usual and the business of running a recruit academy. Go ahead, Michelle.
So all in all, our estimated revised budget for the general fund for this current fiscal year is $235,225,000. We do have one pending item for approval today of $67,000, and that's in the city attorney's office for staffing. That would, if that is approved today by council, we will have a final budget for this year of $235,292,000 in the general fund. Looking at Slide 8, we are looking at our projected year-end fund balance for the general fund. We started the year at $75.5 million, which is about 33.2% of our budget, and as best as we could at this point, our budget team does a lot of work in trying to figure out where we will end the year, looking at what we've spent, what our commitments are. We're projecting a year-end savings at the end of this fiscal year of a little over $2.3 million, almost $2.4 million. If we approve the $67,000 for the clerk's office, I'm sorry, for the attorney's office today, and then we also are projecting some carryovers like we usually do every year, we will end the year with a projected fund balance of about $75.3 million, which is roughly the same percentage, about 33.1% of our budget, which does keep you within the current policy of our floor of 25 and the target of 35%. Onto the PERS rate stabilization fund. As you recall, back in the fall, or late summer, early fall, we had three deposits made to the PERS rate stabilization fund totaling $26.5 million. The money is invested in a moderate portfolio target allocation, and the target annual return on that portfolio is 5%. So as of the third quarter, the return was slightly higher, actually, higher than our target annual return of 5%. It was 8.24%. However, we, the whole market took a dip in the fourth quarter of 2018, so our inception to date return is just slightly under 5%, which is still pretty much on track. And our ending balance at March 31st is $28.5 million, so we have a net $2 million at this point in that, that we've gained on that, on that fund.
Mayor, when did we, when did we, when did we start this fund? Was it a year ago, year and a half ago?
2017. So August, August 9th of 2017, we made the first deposit of $8.8 million. The last deposit to total the $26.5 million was September 21st of 2017.
Thank you.
So at some point, maybe today is a good time for us to have that discussion with council on what potentially you might want to consider for direction for us in utilizing any year-end savings that we might want to deposit into the fund, if any, that that's something that we can discuss.
Sure. And this is just a future budget policy item that we want to place before you in terms of a nugget. This is not a decision you need to make today, but as you know, when we come to you after the budget has been adopted, first quarter, we will have information regarding closeout of, of the previous year. And if we do truly have any level of savings at the end of 1819, which we will find out in, in October of this year, nothing for you to consider at this point, would the council be willing to, at that time, possibly set aside a portion of the savings, instead of it going into the fund balance, to place it into the rate stabilization fund? And that policy decision can come at a later time, but council may consider, do we place 50% of our savings into the rate stabilization fund, quarter of a percent? We can have some options for you at that time to consider, but based on what we know regarding PERS rates and our ability to be able to plan ahead for the future, we know that, that the initial deposit of $26.5 million, we believe, was a, a good policy decision by, by the City Council, and, and to move forward with that policy direction and to increase our funds for the future, the possibility of utilizing year-end savings is, is an option. So we will have more to you regarding that piece of it come first quarter.
Okay. So pretty much wrapping up the third quarter update, we would recommend that council note and file the financial status report as of March 31st of 2019. And there are two items, a resolution of appropriation for you to approve as well. One is $66,763, as I mentioned, funding for, in the general fund for an assistant city attorney position for the remainder of this fiscal year, and $18,000 in grant funding in the library fund, which is a grant fund outside the general fund, and this is a grant that they've received from the Verdura Workforce Development Board for literacy services. So those are the items for you for approval on the appropriation today.
What's the, what's the, I mean, I see the, the purpose for the $66,000, but why is it coming out of budget?
And then we could have Mike Garcia answer our question.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, council members, Sinanian. So our office is currently operating with the staff of attorneys along with the legal fellow, and the person who is staffing the legal fellow position is leaving the city. And so, and we had already put in a request to have that position funded going forward as a permanent position as an assistant city attorney. That's basically to keep the, the level of work at, at the pace that we're, we're going currently. And so the reason we're asking for it now at this point is so that we can fill the position as soon as possible.
Okay. So is that a 1/4th annual salary that's reflected in that?
Yes. Salary and benefits.
And the position ultimately is cost allocated by way of cost allocation?
Probably 50%.
To, to all funds. So general fund would be responsible for a portion of it, and all other funds in terms of enterprise funds would be responsible for the other percentage of it. And the other pieces, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, not sure if you'd like to take action on this item now or at the end of the presentation, because from, at this point, we're gonna move into 1920 fiscal year. So that is completely up to you, sir.
I have a question before we do that. With regard to the occupancy taxes, is this a harbinger of a weak hotel market?
I don't think...
Or a reflection?
I don't think so, honestly. The, the TOT is trending up. It's just not trending up as, as fast as we thought it would, and there was a little bit of a delay in a couple of the hotels coming online, so it just impacted this year's forecast slightly. But overall, the TOT is trending up, just not as much as we had originally anticipated for this fiscal year. So our estimates for next year are a little bit more conservative based on what we're seeing this year. I don't think it's any indication that hotels are not being utilized at all.
That's actually to the contrary. Occupancy rates for the hotels are...
Contrary.
You know, they're doing very well. It is a delay in, in a couple of the projects that were supposed to be up and running within this quarter, and so we will see that, again, balance out in the new fiscal year.
As you know, we're always interested in considering hotel projects. We're trying to look at the tea leaves to see, are we saturated? Is there still a, a demand for them? And so this doesn't, is not a, really, an indication as to the state of the market?
Not at, not at this point, no.
All right. Well, so why don't we take action on this? It's approving the update and the transfer of the $67,000 for the city attorney and the $18,000 for the library fund.
Mr. Mayor, can you explain this, the 60, I know council members, Sinanian, asked that, I was writing something else, and I didn't, I wasn't listening, so. Can you explain that $66,000 one more time?
Sure. So we... Apologies. Our office has been operating with a legal fellow position that was actually an overhire, and we had one vacant position in staff that's going to be filled, and, and so the legal fellow is departing the city. We had already had plans to convert that to an assistant city attorney position, and we're asking to do that now so that we can fill the position as soon as possible to keep the staff, essentially, keep the staffing at the current level.
So the legal fellow and assistant city attorney is the same position?
It will, no, the assistant city attorney will, in essence, replace the legal fellow position. But the legal fellow position was not funded in the budget. It was an overhire position, one created two years ago.
So we don't have an assistant city attorney at this time?
Actually, we don't. We have a number of senior assistants, but this will be a new position. But again, filling the role that the legal fellow was doing, and that person was working at a high level, and we basically needed to, to keep the, the level of work, maintain the level...
It's a high-level position, because when you say legal fellow, it sounds like...
Right. No, he, no, that position was a lawyer, working as a lawyer, representing the city in court, doing high-level legal work, and we were in the process of trying to convert it, but we just need to do it now so we can fill the position.
All right. Thank you. So you don't have too many chiefs in your department, do you? I mean, you said they're all senior. We've got several, five or six seniors.
No. Well, we, as you know, I have a chief assistant that oversees the litigation department and risk management, and I have a chief that oversees all the, the department services attorneys.
So just two chiefs?
Yes, sir.
That's not too many chiefs?
In my view, no.
Okay.
My question is, the assistant city attorney will not be another chief?
No.
It's an assistant.
It's an assistant city attorney.
Assistant assistant.
Yeah. That's the classification.
Okay.
It's right, it's right above entry-level positions, so somebody with some experience, but, right.
Okay. Would someone like to move the item?
I'll move the item.
With those amendments?
With the amendments.
Is there a second? Second. Roll call, please.
Council members, Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpadian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
And let's keep rolling, Michelle.
Okay. Fiscal year 2019-20, general fund proposed budget, that's where we're headed. So just a quick overview of our process. I know we run through this pretty much every year with you, but it is important to note the level of effort from the staff in all the departments, the executives in all the departments, and especially on, in finance with the budget team led by Adriné right next to me. They put in a lot of work, starting in the fall, to get us to this point and take us into June. So there isn't really a whole lot of downtime anymore when it comes to budget, but they, they do an exceptional job. So I thank all the departments and their support, as well as the city manager's office, and then my, especially my team. Late October, we started the process. As I mentioned, we go through our cost allocation. That's a formal cost allocation plan that is prepared by a consultant, where the general fund support department costs are distributed out to the non-general fund. Those are key to, to the general fund to help recover some of those internal service costs that are, that are charged to the other departments. Late November, the budget team is looking at all of our internal service funds. Those are internal services to the city that are funded by the different departments for the various services that they offer. Medical insurance, workers' comp insurance, liability. Our information services department is an internal service fund. We have fleet, building services. All of those funds operate on rate-based, back to the user departments. So those, those funds are analyzed so that we can keep them healthy and in the positive. Early February, we had our kickoff meeting with all the departments. All the key staff were present. We talked through the whole process with them for this year, set out the deadlines for all the submittals that need to be turned in, and all the key dates so that we can get to this point in the process. Any changes that were impacting the budget were also discussed. And I should say, at that point, we were live in our new system. So budget staff had to be trained, department staff had to be trained, so everybody was doing the budget this year in our new system. So there was quite a bit of work that was happening just a couple months ago. Early February, we opened up the budget module in our new system, and the staff started entering, and all the departments started building their budgets for all 80 funds across the 15 city departments. We had departments submitting budget requests to us that included any personnel changes, capital improvement items, or any capital outlays, equipment replacements, et cetera, new fees. All of that came into the team for them to analyze, and then we started having meetings with the departments and the city manager's office to go through all of that information so that we can put together the best budget possible for the city. In early April, we had the all-hands meeting with department executives, budget staff, and the city manager to review everything, and just about a week ago, we've got things finalized so that we could be here today. I'm gonna turn it over to Adriné Asayon. As I've mentioned, she's our deputy director over budget, all things budget, and she'll take us through the rest of this presentation.
Good morning, Mayor Najarian, members of the council. My name is Adriné Asayon. I'm deputy director of finance. I'm actually happy to be here to present the, the material because it means we're almost there. So thank you for being here this morning. I'm here to present the 1920 general fund proposed budget, and our starting point always is our projected resources for the, for the given year, because it provides a idea where we're headed with our appropriations and what projects we can and cannot do. So doing, looking at the revenues, our starting point is our most revised revenue estimate, which in this case is our 1819 revised estimate of $226,517,909 for the general fund. So our goal is to highlight incremental differences that we factored into the 1920 budget categorically for the general fund. So the adjustments that have been factored in into the proposed 1920 general fund budget on the revenue side include property tax adjustment of $2.5 million. So we are increasing our property tax projection by $2.5 million in the 1920 budget. This is based purely on our annual property valuation information that we receive, so this is what's expected to be coming in. We are also projecting an increase of $717,000 in our sales tax category. This is excluding any Measure S funding, so our sales tax increase does not reflect any Measure S, nor does any of the remainder of the presentation. Measure S is not included in any of the slides that you're gonna see today. There will be a separate study session, study session number three, which will highlight both the revenues and the appropriations in relation to Measure S.
For our direction.
For your direction.
You wanted to make sure the Measure S funds were totally separate and not swallowed up, and...
Yes, exactly. For your direction. Utility users tax, we are projecting a decrease of $293,000. As Michelle mentioned earlier, this is primarily due to telecommunication, as well as video services. There is a shift in consumers using more OTT, over-the-top internet services like Hulu, Netflix, to stream videos, and those are not subject to UUT, in addition to people moving away from landlines and using more wireless services, which are also not subject to, to UUT. So...
I have a question, Mr. Garbage. So this $293,000, is it based on less than the projected numbers, or less than the numbers that we had last year?
This is based on the most revised estimate based on last year. So the, so we've decreased it from what we estimated 1819 to be by $293,000. So you're seeing incremental change from one year to the next. Okay? Occupancy and other taxes are projected to increase by $1,005,000. This is just due to hotels coming online and various other items within the category. Inner fund revenue is projected to decrease by $272,000. This is primarily a decrease in our cost allocation. Cost allocation is based on two years ago actuals, so this is just the new rate for 1920, based on our, our performance and expenditures two years ago. And this year, as a part of the 1920, we are collapsing the special events filming funds, as well as the recreation fund into the general fund. These funds are currently housed in special revenue funds and, and no longer qualified to be special revenue fund, so as a part of doing that cleanup, we are collapsing these funds into the general fund, and with it, we are bringing the revenues that these funds generate, as well as the appropriations that these funds generate, into the general fund. So we are shifting $5.3 million in, in revenue from these funds into this, into general fund. The, the revenue in these categories, they, they range from charges for services, rentals, filming funds, revenue, that kind of stuff is being brought into the general fund. Of that $5.3 million, 3.8 of it is the recreation fund, and 1.4 of it is the filming funds.
There's a question.
Yes. Ms. Devine?
This is estimates of increases in these. So this was, this would not be a place where we would see the GWP transfer? Okay. All right. I'll follow up on that. Thank you.
Sure. And all other revenues are projected to increase $17,936, totaling adjustments of $9.5 million to our revenue base going into 1920. Factoring in the... Factoring in the assigned use of economic development fund balance for some hourly employees within the economic development section of $628,251 are fiscal year 19-20 proposed resources. It's $236,649,573.
Mr. Kretschner? My question is not specific to you, but because I don't know whom I have to direct to. Let's say on utility users' tax, we know that some of it is like charter, and we tell them to charge the customer, charge them tax, and then we collect the money somehow. But on Hulu and other providers, there are no taxes to them. So why we can't ask them, if they provide any services in city of Glendale, why we don't ask them to pay or charge some taxes on those services?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilman Ragajani. And so it's been a subject of much debate amongst the cities. Anytime you impose a new fee or expand the scope of a fee or tax, that potentially triggers Prop 218. And so they have objected to paying, and so they're not paying. Some of the cities have considered imposing administrative rule to do that, but frankly, I don't think any city wants to be the first test case. So at the current, currently, nobody is, has pushed that, but I assume at some point it will be litigated. But at the time, at the time, nobody has made that request for them to pay the fee. To actually increase to formally adopt a rule that's going to expand the scope of a tax that would trigger Prop 218, and so I think there's been no movement in that area.
What will happen if you write a letter, let's say, to Hulu and other services?
Oh, don't say, we're not, they'll write back and say, "We're not subject to that tax."
Then we have to start somewhere. Here we are charging charter customer services or phone companies, like AT&amp;T and others, and so what's the difference?
I should make clear, we think that they're subject to it. It's just a matter of interpretation, and at this point, nobody has moved forward to ask them.
Why we don't start that?
We can have, we can have a discussion about that.
Because when somebody starts, others, they join, and then becomes stronger group of cities, and then it may get to somewhere.
And I think those discussions have been had. I know that representatives from the legal cities, for example, have had discussions with representatives from that particular industry, and just there's been no movement, is my understanding.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Councilmember Ragajani, very good question. And you're absolutely right, and it's something that I think a lot of cities are interested in. Based on your line of questioning, what we will do, if it pleases the council, is to get more information regarding this matter. We've watched it peripherally, because initially, honestly, we have thought, let's not be the first city to jump in this bandwagon. There's no bandwagon to jump on, but to jump on this. And so we'll get you more information regarding the entire matter, and if council so desires, we can, we can have a larger discussion on this and a policy direction from the city council in terms of how you all would like us to proceed. So we'll make this a note and provide you with more information, and then we can take follow-up direction after that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Looking at the proposed 19-20 general fund appropriations, our starting point is always our prior year adopted budget. So in this case, our adopted budget for fiscal year 2018-19 was $227,786,180. And again, going through the categories and highlighting the incremental adjustments to the budget to arrive at our final proposed 19-20 budget, we are adjusting the salaries and benefits by $7.8 million, and I'll have the differences in the following slides to highlight what those are. And again, collapsing the filming and the recreation fund, it's bringing 1.1 million and 3 million in salaries and benefits expenses to the general fund for a total salaries and benefits increase of about almost $12 million. Looking at the MNO side, we have some, you know, increases in the liability insurance fund, slightly over $1 million, as well as a decrease of $3 million in the fleet equipment rental charge, and a decrease in the ISD service charge, all other MNO charges, and the MNO components of the filming and the recreation fund collapsing in. For a total maintenance and operation, a decrease of just a little over, a little under $2.1 million. The transfers out, capital outlet category is also decreasing by $687,000, making our total proposed fiscal year 19-20 general fund budget $236,968,577. It is important to note that had it not been for the collapsing of the filming fund and the recreation fund, our proposed budget would have been $231,577,000. So a large chunk of this increase, $5.4 million almost, is due to just the structural change of the filming and the recreation fund collapsing. You would have only seen a $3.7 million increase in our appropriations had it not been for that.
The recreational fund, what does that include?
It's the recreation operations of CSP. They charge for services that they provide to like classes, filming, excuse me, rental fees, that type of operation, operation that Community Services and Parks hosts. So it's all the various facility rentals that occur throughout the city, as well as classes that they offer for recreation purposes, like lifelong learning and that type of activities.
So we are $3 million short this year?
No, we're bringing $3 million in expenses to the general fund this year because they have an appropriation, but it's revenue offset on the revenue slide. If you, on the previous slide, there's $3.8 million of that recreation filming fund shifts. Of that 5.3, 3.8 of that is revenue that they're bringing to the general fund, offsetting this $3 million in salaries and this $1 million in the MNO side.
So all you're seeing is a structural change? Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Councilmember Garpetian, it's a structural change. There is no new monies that are necessary. It's a collapse of the recreation fund and the film fund. So it's a collapse of that, no longer as a separate fund. It is coming into the general fund. So that collapse coming into the general fund, you still need to pay for the services, et cetera. Just a structural change.
So from CSP, you're moving it to general fund?
Exactly.
Instead of having it like an enterprise fund all by itself?
Exactly.
And why is that, that you're shifting it from there?
It's a special revenue fund, and it doesn't qualify to be special revenue fund. It doesn't meet the criteria to be a standalone fund of itself. So per our auditors and per our evaluation and accounting, we felt that it was necessary to make the cleanup happen in 19-20 to continue with our audit requirements.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Garpetian, the fund is still under, or the operations are still under Community Services and Parks. None of that changes. Their services are still the same. The revenues that they're generating are still the same. The only difference is, is where we're categorizing those costs. And it, because it doesn't, as Adrinay said, it doesn't qualify and meet the definition of a special revenue fund, what the monies they're generating aren't restricted to be utilized in any way, shape, or form. So when the auditors bring that to our attention, and we've been talking about this with them for the last couple of years, so we kind of knew this was coming, that we had to bring it back into the general fund because those funds are not restricted. So by definition, the accounting definition's out there for special revenue funds, it just didn't meet the criteria anymore. Same with the filming and special events fund. They are really general fund type activities.
Did the definition of special revenue fund change because we've been operating like this for the last?
Correct, no.
Twenty years, I mean.
Correct. And no, the definition has not changed, and we've been, we've been considering doing this for a while now, and it just, because the auditors finally brought it to our attention one last time, we decided that this was the year that we needed to do it. It's nice in a certain way to keep some of these operations isolated so that they can see what their revenues are and what their expenditures are and operate somewhat separately from the general fund, but in essence, it really is, it really is not restricted revenues, so it doesn't meet the definition.
So the revenues, since it's not restricted, the revenues that's generated by CSP can be used for other purposes?
Correct. In essence, yes. Yes.
Okay. Can you give us the main components of the salary and benefits increase?
Yes, it's in the following slides. So looking at the categorical increases, salaries and benefits had a net increase of $11.9 million, primarily due to, 6.2 of it is for PERS increases compared to last year. $3 million is due to the recreation fund collapsing into the general fund. A million and one of it is due to the filming funds collapsing into the general fund, and there's cost of living adjustments for GFFA at 1.5%, GCA 1.5%, GMA and hourly employees at 1.5%.
Okay. Adrin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So of the, of the $7.8 million increase in salaries and benefits, 6.2 million is attributable to PERS?
6.2 is attributable to PERS.
Okay. And the next line says $3 million due to recreation fund. The $3 million what?
In salaries and benefits, so their staffing, that is, that was in the recreation fund that are now housed in the general fund. So $3 million of that increase is going towards the staffing.
Okay, this is just the same, is this the same amount as the 3.044 million?
Yes.
And 1.1 million. So why is there, why is there an increase in the amount of the general fund due to the collapsing of the recreation fund? Why is that, why is that causing, oh, okay, I'm sorry, I get it.
There's revenue coming in with it, but there's also expenses coming in with it. So both sides of the equation are increasing.
Right, I was thinking of the revenue. Wishful thinking, just thinking of the revenue, not the expense that's associated with it. So this very hefty increase in salaries and benefits, 6.2 million is due to PERS?
Primarily due to PERS.
And this amount is going to get bigger every year for the next, what, four or five years?
It peaks out at 31, 32, I want to say.
About 10 years.
About 10 years. The next 10 years, we're going to see an incline.
Wow. And how much, how much was this increase in, the PERS increase specifically last year for the last fiscal year? Do you have that number?
I don't have it readily available, but we'll have it in a few minutes. If you just give me a few minutes.
Yeah, I just want to get a mental picture of the rate at which it's escalating, and, you know, I'm afraid to imagine what it's going to be in 2030.
Well, it peaks, as you know, in 2030, 31.
Right.
And then it evens out in terms of the stabilizing...
Right about time when our grandchildren come around, right?
Correct. Hence, the council took the very bold, I think, policy decision in 2017 to set aside almost $27 million, $26.5 million for the PERS rate stabilization fund, to say, for us to be able to deal with some of the costs that are coming forward in the future, let's set aside some, some funding to help us stabilize in the outer years as we move forward before the actual market stabilizes itself. And so, based on the increases that you see on an annual basis, based on the fact that it is the cost of doing business in the public sector in California, council has taken very, very significant steps in terms of, as you know, a second-tier retirement system prior to Pepper even coming on board with the state of California. This council went with a second retirement system, which we will see the benefits of that down the road. You're not going to see that today. It's allowing us to ride that ship through the difficult times. So that's one of them. Pepper came in some years later. That is also going to help us stabilize down the road. Council setting aside, again, the $26.5 million to help us with that, with that gap in future years, but allowing the fund to remain and be invested for a period of time so we can reap some of the rewards of that, I think is, is something that will take discipline to help us, again, with the gaps that are in place in, in future years. Hence, the conversation of, should we set aside any funding down the road as it relates to year-end savings in terms of a budgetary policy decision for the city council to, again, help us with costs that are, that are going to be part of our budget on an annual basis?
So as you look, thank you for that, and as you look at that comparison, last year's PERS increase compared to this year's, is there a way to estimate as to what the PERS amount will be, or what the total increase will be in 2030? Can you present that to us, too? I just kind of want to...
Sure.
Put the fear of God in all of us, and because you talked about discipline, I think discipline has to be on everyone's minds as we move forward. Every step we take, we need to be realistic, what we're looking at realistically. And of course, we've taken steps, I'm sure we'll continue taking steps, but in order for us to, to stay disciplined and continue on this path of responsible governance, we need to know just how bad it's going to be.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Councilmember Sinanian, you will also see those numbers based on the five-year forecast that we will be presenting to you in a few slides as well, in terms of what those PERS rates are, and we can talk about that when we get to that slide as well. I don't know if you have the numbers for...
I do. The last year's number was $6.3 million in PERS, and since then, we've reduced about 10 positions to as part of the 19-20 budget. So you're reflecting, we're reflecting a 6.2, a slight decrease due to the reductions in personnel versus the reduction in the cost.
Okay. And my last point is, so if we add these numbers up, and math has never been my forte, it looks like only, of the 11, roughly $12 million, only 1.6 million is attributable to cost of living adjustments to our unions, is that correct?
So the cost of living adjustments is a broad category. We didn't want to assign it a dollar number because there's also some reallocations that occur during the year. There's also step increases that occur. So we, this slide isn't intended to sum up because we just wanted to highlight what are the significant drivers of the cost. There is other increases that are factored into the 19-20 salaries and benefits category.
So 1.6 million includes not only the, the cost of living adjustment, but salary adjustments, step adjustments?
Exactly.
Things that are directly attributable to...
Normal...
Folks getting more pay. Is 1.6 million out of a total of 12 million? I want to make sure that, you know, if someone looks at these numbers, they then say, "Oh, did you see that $12 million increase in salaries and, you know, this is city largesse, and they're passing out money like it's candy?" That's not the case. Only a fraction of that amount is actually attributable to folks getting higher pay.
Yes, that's correct. And you bring up a very good point, Councilmember Sinanian, as well as the $4.1 million in terms of the collapse of the recreation fund, as well as the film fund. And so the collapse happening on one side and then coming in on the, on the expense side, which was already happening by way of another fund, but now it will be happening by way of the general fund. So just to kind of take it even a step further.
Right, even further. On that point, the $3 million due to recreation fund, so that's the expense associated with it, what is the, what's the revenue that it brings in?
$3.8 million is the revenue that it brought.
Okay, so, right, there you go. It's not like...
Yeah, it's all revenue offset.
Okay, thank you.
Looking at the maintenance and operation impact, there was a decrease of $2.1 million in this category proposed for 19-20. The decreases are in, there's a reduction of $3 million in the fleet equipment rental charge that is proposed for 19-20, as well as $1 million net in reductions in the MNO categories across all the departments due to various budget reductions that were included in the 19-20 budget. And the details for these we'll see in the following slides, as well as $390,000 decrease in the ISD service charge. This is a service charge that's done annually, just like a cost allocation plan. Again, the, the information used is a two-years and a year's actual, so this is just the rate reflecting for 19-20. Looking at the increases in the maintenance and operations category, there's $1 million increase in the liability insurance fund. As Michelle mentioned earlier, annually, through the budget process, all of our ISF internal service fund rates are evaluated, and in order for us to keep the funds healthy, we adjust the rates accordingly. In the liability insurance fund, we are increasing the rate from 3.5% to 4.7% in 19-20, which is why we're seeing this $1 million increase, and it's to keep the fund operating in the positive and to keep the fund healthy going forward. There's a million and one increase in the recreation fund coming in from the general fund, so this is, again, not an increase to our budget. This is just the MNO side of the filming, recreation fund, and the other side of the filming fund with $174,000. Looking at the transfers category, there is a net decrease of $687,000 primarily due to the transfers category. $1.3 million is a less due to the GSA loan repayment. As you all know, 20% of the GSA loan repayment gets transferred to the low and mod housing fund, and because the GSA loan repayment is budgeted to be less in 19-20 based on the schedule that we receive, the transfer is also less by $1.3 million going out from the general fund to the low and mod fund. These decreases are offset by an increase of $500,000 in the transfer to the debt service fund. This is basically our transfer from the general fund to, to the police building fund for the COPs, which were just recently refinanced. The, the prior year budget was $1 million going out from the general fund to this fund, and initially, we had projected $1.7 million was going to be going out, but the new projection is $1.71 million. is 1.5 million, and you're seeing this 500,000 dollar increase from prior year. Finally, there's a 74,000 dollar increase in the sales tax transfer to the capital fund. 2% of our budgeted sales tax revenue is transferred to the CIP fund, and because our base is higher by 717,000 this year for sales tax, so is our transfer. The 2% of the number is yielding a 74,000 dollar increase. As a part of the 1920 budget, there was also a few departments who had proposed service-level adjustments. City clerk is requesting 19,200 adjustments for some general supplies. Community development has adjustments of 222,000 for earning distribution changes. This is to bring back portions of staff that are charged to the successor agency that cannot be charged to the successor agency going forward, so we just need to bring our distributions back to the general fund. Community services and parks is requesting 8,040 for contractual services. This is related to landscape maintenance at a few new sites. And finally, fire department is requesting almost 1.4 million dollars primarily for the fire academy, which includes 15 recruits, as well as a vacant position redirected from another department to be used as an emergency services coordinator. So all in all, the total adjustments that have been factored into the 1920 budget in the form of service-level adjustments total 1.6 million dollars.
And moving forward, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, in terms of the fire department, to reiterate what I had said earlier, we will have a fire academy on an annual basis based on natural attrition that occurs within the department. And that is based on natural, just operating costs of the department. And so, by way of practice through the years, we have tended to come to you after budget adoption to ask for you to allocate funds to the fire department for their fire academy. We know what those costs are. Again, it's approximately a million dollars, 800 to a million dollars on an annual basis. And so, moving forward, 1920 and on, we have allocated the million dollars into the fire department's budget separately in terms of them being able to have a fire academy in place to do the recruitment that is necessary for the fire department instead of coming to council on an annual basis after budget adoption to ask for that allocation. It's the cost of doing business, and we have done the fire department in a, kind of a different way than all other departments throughout the years, and we just needed to fix that anomaly. And so, moving forward, that dollar amount will be part of the fire department's budget.
And my question, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
On the community development, that is for a, another staff?
It's not new staff, it's existing staff. It's portions of two staff that are being charged to the successor agency. So a quarter of existing staff and 90% of another existing position that is currently being charged to the successor agency. And every six months, it gets evaluated whether these people can be charged to the successor agency, and they no longer can be. So we just need to bring back their costs to the general fund.
Based on the Department of Finance, and as you know, we go through that process with the Department of Finance to the county that comes from the state, and our ability to be able to continue to charge to the successor agency is no longer applicable. And so, the two positions, a portion of each of those positions have to come back to the general fund. And Mr. Landsafame can answer specifics.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just to add to that, they're offset, those funds that we're using to pay salary will now pay another cost of the successor agency. So they are offset. It's not an increase per se.
Okay, thank you.
Looking at the 1920 general fund five-year forecast, looking at, around this time, we do an anticipated year-end where we think we're going to end the 18, 19 actuals. And based on information that we have as it stands today, we expect to have, to balance the budget with 200,000 dollars in use of fund balance for 18, 19, factoring in 2.5 million in carryovers and the 67,000 that was approved earlier this morning. So our actual year-end fund balance, we expect to have 2.4 million positive. It's just that we have carryovers that we have to factor in for commitments and contracts that have started in 18, 19 that will carry over into 1920, and that's why we're factoring that 2.5 in the bottom, getting us to a negative status in fund balance use. Looking at our proposed 1920, we, as you've seen already, we are proposing 236.7 million in revenues with 237 million in expenses or 300,000 dollars in use of fund balance to balance the budget for 1920. Looking at the outer years, we anticipate 2021 to end the year in 2.9 million use of fund balance, 13.1 million for '21, '22, 14.5 million use of fund balance in '22, '23, and 15.3 million in '23, '24. We understand that these are very large deficits, our use of fund balance, and we don't come to you annually with this type of a, when the time comes and it's time to propose a budget, we come to you with a budget that is reflecting a more realistic use of fund balance, and a variety of strategies can be utilized to get to a number that is more reasonable. For example, in, when we saw the projection for 1920 at the first quarter, five-year forecast, the 1920 projected general fund deficit was 11 million dollars. And today, as you saw on the previous slide, it's 300,000. And how we got there is we applied a variety of reductions as well as a revenue adjustment to make up the difference.
Before you get into that, I have a question. Take a breath in between.
Please, going back to the previous slide, going back to the previous slide. Resources. Is the transfer included in these numbers? And if it's not there, then is it anywhere in this?
It is included in these numbers. It is part of our resources number because it is a revenue resource to the general fund.
So it's part of, it's part of the 236.7 million dollars for 1920. The transfer has always been part of the resources within the city of Glendale. So it is part of that.
And it actually is about a 750,000 dollar decrease over, from this current fiscal year's budget.
So we'll be, then, what will it be?
20 million, 20.3 million roughly. And that's an estimate because we do it at the end of the year based on actuals. So it is estimated to be slightly lower.
Yes, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes, thank you. You mentioned that a few years ago, when we did the five-year forecast, our deficit was 11 million for this year, and you made some adjustments and reductions. Can you explain on those reductions as to what those reductions were?
Sure, sure. They are a part of this presentation, and they're coming up in a few slides.
I'll wait for that, I'll wait for that.
It's literally the next slide, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Garapetean, as we get into the summary of the reductions. And, I'm sorry, sir, I'm not sure if you had another question before I...
I do have another question, maybe a comment. So on PERS, I want to understand this one more time because we did this study a couple of years ago, and we did a 10-year projection on PERS, and in 2030 or '30, '31, it was a whopping number of 77 million dollars. So for '23, '24, PERS is 60 million. And the cost share, is this the share that is paid by the employees?
Employees, yes.
Okay. So our net cost, net PERS is, in that year, is 56 million. Is this our share that the city pays?
Correct.
Out of the general fund?
General fund, yes.
Okay. So, and this is based on the assumption that our appropriation, that our total income is going to be 267 million dollars in '23, '24, basically. Am I correct?
251.9 million dollars is our income.
In terms of resources, but in terms of appropriations, yes, you're correct.
What's the difference between the two?
You're correct. No.
267 is basically the total revenues that you're estimating we're going to have in that year.
No, no.
To spend, okay.
Yeah. The revenues...
Okay, so we have a deficit of 15 million.
Yeah, correct.
And our projection is to have, estimated is to have 251 million dollars revenue at that year.
Yes, correct.
And I might add, these PERS projections are based on the latest percentages that we receive every year from PERS, which change. So as we get new information and they update their numbers, we put that into the forecast. So this is as we know right now, and we'll have new reports later in the summer, towards the end of summer, early fall.
It'll get worse before it gets better.
Potentially.
Right, I mean, we're not expecting that PERS obligation to drop. If anything, as it has been in the last decade, it's, you know, the obligation increases.
And they've changed their assumed rate of return, and they're trying to make their percentages on their investment portfolio, and everybody took a hit the fourth quarter of this year. So this year is probably going to impact, but they do have that smoothing effect, so you're not going to see that tremendous jump in one year. It'll get smoothed out over. So there are those assumptions they're continually looking at, which is why every year when they send those reports, they put those latest numbers in there, we update our forecast.
So this is, I know you're telling us not to be alarmed, but this is quite alarming. We have a general fund reserve, what did we say? It was 75.
75.
So at the end of, assuming, and I know that there's adjustments that'll be made, but at the end of '23, '24, that's 30 million, that's about 45 million. We'll have burned through about half of that, right? About more than half.
As in terms of reserves?
Right.
Well, the alarming part is, Mr. Mayor, that the numbers on PERS, we're sure that it's going to continue to go up, to grow, but our revenues may not grow if there is a change in economy, if there's a hurdle, or there's a, there's a, an adjustment in the economy. That's the alarming part, that our revenue may not go up as far as we were estimating today. So I think that's what we need to keep looking at and see, well, how can we adjust it when it comes to that point when the economy goes down and...
And, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, and as we delve into the summary of the reductions for the general fund for 1920, initially starting out with an 11 million dollar budget deficit, and you see 300,000 dollars for the new fiscal year, that doesn't happen easily just based on the fact that we have had reductions in the city of Glendale in some form in the last 20 years with minor adjustments in a couple of years that I've been part of this organization upwards. And it has continuously, previous to the last negotiations we had with our employee groups, previous to that was concessions, as you all know, and very difficult decisions by the city council in terms of the negotiations that were at hand at the time. And coming up with a 300,000 dollar budget deficit for 1920 was not easy, and it doesn't just happen by chance. And it is reduction within the departments, and these departments have already cut, as you know, to the bone, and they're cutting some more with some efficiencies, I think, that are in place that we needed to do. And you'll also see some cuts within the internal service funds, specifically within fleet, and we can talk about that. But you're not going to be able to make these types of cuts in terms of fleet and workers' compensation again next year because we've already cut so deeply. And so, what you all say in terms of needing to make, you know, very hard decisions moving forward, you're absolutely correct. We will have to adjust some of our operations to be able to meet the demand as it relates to the appropriations coming in. And those adjustments, at the end of the day, as I've seen year after year throughout the years, as well as during the economic downturn, has to do with services that are provided to this community, and what does that look like and what does that cost? And are we able to maintain our essential services and quality of life that we are all used to and this council pushes for on an annual basis? And so, we continue to massage and reduce and try to be as effective and efficient as we possibly can. But there does come a point where the line of the appropriations, I think, as stated by Councilmember Garapetean very well, and our resources are going to cross. And what does that mean? And where are those cuts going to come from if revenues are not increased? And so, that's kind of where we are. Looking good for us coming into next year based on cuts, but we can get into those reductions if you're prepared for that at this time.
So we have seminars that we go to, council members and mayors. I imagine financial officers have the same sort of thing.
Absolutely.
What do you guys talk about? Do you say, boy, we're all going off the cliff in five years?
Everybody's dealing with the same issues when it comes to PERS. There are, which is why the PERS rate stabilization fund was a strategy that we brought to you and that you definitely made the hard decision to do that. That's a great policy decision. That is actually one of the strategies that's recommended out there. And there are some others as far as if you have the funds available to start paying down some of your unfunded liability, that will help as well. But yeah, it's a tough one, and all cities are facing it. We are not unique to the situation when it comes to...
Do you talk about the people, thank you, Mr. Mayor, do you talk about the people who run PERS? Because it seems like they're exceptionally bad at investing money. I mean, they're exactly the people that shouldn't be running PERS. And I say that, I know it sounds a little offensive, but this is true. People who are running these private endowments for, let's say, Harvard or Yale somehow managed to have 8, 9, 10% returns on the worst year. Well, why is it that these people are running probably one of the largest funds in the world and are so bad, are so bad, they're terrible?
They've actually improved, I think, in some of their investment strategy. But it is a function of the stock market, as you know. There are certain investments that are going to dip when the economy changes and when things happen in the stock market. PERS does have different investment strategies. They've tried to diversify more than what they have in the past, and they have a bunch of investment managers that are looking at this stuff as well because their people are also impacted. The state's impacted, and every city up and down the state of California are impacted. We don't typically, I've not been in any discussions or sessions at conferences where they've talked, as you've mentioned, Councilmember Sananian, regarding the investment managers at PERS. We have heard directly from PERS actuaries themselves at conferences, and they are all dealing with the same situation of the stock market and the various investment strategies that they're trying to shift out of and their board.
I know, but by example, was people dealing with the same stock market. I'm not comparing the stock market on planet Mars.
Yeah.
I mean, New York Stock Exchange, stock market, and somehow they manage to secure a huge return compared to what PERS manages to do. Are they encumbered by governmental regulations as to what they can invest on?
I don't believe so, and I don't know...
So that's just bad?
It could, it could...
The other piece of it is enhanced retirement systems. I mean, investment is one piece of it in terms of investing in the real estate market years ago, and they no longer do that. But, you know, enhanced retirement systems that came about in the year 2000 and after in terms of folks who negotiated at the time, rightfully so because it was what cities were doing, and so no blame on the associations. It was something that was being offered. And they negotiated enhancement retirement systems that overnight, overnight, once that was approved, allowed folks who had worked 20 years prior to that date to receive the enhanced retirement system for those previous 20 years and not just prospectively into the future. And that was, I think, the biggest mistake in terms of allowing that to occur within this type of a system. So it wasn't just perspective, it was all year served, and so the liability became quite huge, and we are now also dealing with paying that piece of it. And so, that smoothing effect is coming into play as you, as policymakers, are grappling with that annually. The other piece of it is when we go to other jurisdictions and when we go to conferences by way of, you know, financial conferences, the league, city managers' conferences, et cetera, it's new revenue sources that are helping cities out of a situation outside of a base revenue base that is within each system. And as you know, ours is lower than most other cities in terms of our property tax base, et cetera, we're 13 cents. Other cities are higher than that. Other cities are dealing with it by way of new revenues. So both Burbank and Pasadena, who have dealt with... So both Burbank and Pasadena, who have dealt with budgetary deficits and continue to, are dealing with it with their new revenue sources that was just passed by way of sales tax. That's how they're dealing with it. City of Pasadena started their, their budget study sessions yesterday, and they're dealing with it by way of a three-point-six-million-dollar budget deficit with their measure I, which was their sales tax measure. Now, we, as the city of Glendale, based on council direction, have said we are going to deal with measure S completely separately than we do our entire general fund budget. And so that council can make a decision on an annual basis, based on what you believe those priorities are. And some of those fiscal years are going to go into multiple fiscal years, based on housing choices that you may make in terms of development, et cetera, and other types of possibly projects, which will be our, our third budget study session. But at some point, at some point, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm not saying this year, I'm not saying necessarily next year, at some point, we will have to come to grips about essential services and quality of life services that are provided by way of departments, and what does that ultimately mean in terms of your resources and, and your appropriations?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Aragajan.
I, I agree with Mr. Sinani, and I think we raise this issue over and over again. A couple of issues that CalPERS or, or PERS don't have, that many other investment companies have, they don't care. What happens is, if they are short, we cough up the money.
And we look for...
And that's why we have, that's why we have the, that we make up the difference. So they don't have to, they're not obligated, basically, they don't feel obligated. That's, that's the feeling that I have about this whole thing. Otherwise, I mentioned before, you know, we, we hired the, the company that runs our, our PERS stabilization fund, and they're making five percent a year. Why not invest in the same, I asked the same question, why not invest in the same stocks or funds? But obviously, they have their own guidelines, and they think they, they, they know it all. So that's why we're, we're in this hole, that the company that manages this thing, they're, I think, state agency, right? So they're not obligated to anyone, and the money comes in, and we cough up the rest of it. And with our, our, I mean, our funds that we have, the PERS stabilization fund, even if you make five, five percent a year, it's seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars a year, versus the seventy-seven million dollars that we have, we are obligated to in eight years or nine years, it's a drop in the bucket. It's a, it's a good idea to have that, but I think we need to look at, look into how are we going to manage this thing when, when the economy changes. And it will change, there is no way, one wrong foreign policy move, and you know what happens. So it's not the doomsday, the city's doing great, but I think we need to be very proactive and look into those issues.
Jumping into the proposed reduction detail, administrative services had reductions of two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand. This is elimination of a vacant position, as well as reductions in the contractual services budget. City Attorney is reducing ten thousand dollars, it's all in contractual services. Community Development, eight-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars, elimination of two vacant positions, a downgrade reallocation of a vacant position, and reductions in contractual services for CDD.
I think what's important to, to note on community development is the elimination of the two vacant positions is nowhere within building and safety or, or the planning section, because, you know, the, the direction from the City Council last year was, let's make sure we shore up in those areas where we are very busy. And Philip Lanzafame understands that piece of it and, and wants to make sure that those positions are not vacant, and we fill those positions. So the elimination of the vacant positions, if you can say what they are specifically for, for this department, I believe it's a deputy director position.
Deputy Director of CDD and Customer Services Supervisor position.
So we had a retirement within the Customer Service Operations Supervisor position. We were able to consolidate the work that was being done with staff internally, within the administrative folks, and a deputy director position that has been vacant for some time, and Mr. Lanzafame was, was willing to, to forego that position, based on the fact that we need to, to shore up the other areas. Moving on to community services.
Community Services and Parks, the reduction is three-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand. It is, again, eliminating two vacant positions and shifting positions to other funds outside of the general fund, as well as reductions in hourly wages, utilities, and contractual services. Fire has reductions of almost two-hundred-and-two thousand. This is a reduction in the contractual services budget, as well as some training. Human Resources has reductions of three-hundred-and-eighteen thousand. It's eliminating one vacant position, a downgrading of one vacant position, and reductions in contractual services. Innovation, Performance, and Audit has reductions of one-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, almost, and it's reductions in hourly wages and contractual services. Library Arts and Culture has reductions of two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars. It is to eliminate one vacant position, as well as reductions in hourly wages and M&amp;O. Management Services has reductions of one-hundred-and-forty-four thousand. It's elimination of one vacant position, as well as contractual services. Police has reductions of three-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand. It's eliminating two vacant positions and reductions in contractual services. And finally, Public Works has reductions of six-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand. It is eliminating one vacant position, it's shifting positions to other funds, as well as reductions in contractual services. So all in all, three and a half million, one-point-nine of it is in salaries, and one-point-six of it is in M&amp;O.
So my question is, in the police department, what are the two positions?
The two positions in the police department that are being eliminated are public safety business coordinator, as well as a narcotics officer.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Aragajan. On Public Works, eliminate one vacant position, shifting positions to other funds. How much that one position total salary was, that it amounts to six-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand?
It doesn't. It's a combination of a vacant position, which I believe is over, a little over two-hundred thousand, based on salaries and benefits, the shifting of the positions to other funds, it's portions of positions that do work for some, some of our enterprise funds, who need to be charged to that, and, and Mr. Galanian can answer those questions, and then elimination of contractual services, which is within maintenance and operation.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Councilmember Aragajan, the vacant position we're eliminating is an Assistant Entry Level Assistant Traffic Engineer position, and we are shifting the cost of some of these salary positions into our enterprise funds, such as sewer and refuse funds, because these positions primarily, or for that portion of their salary, their work is related to those funds. So they work on sewer projects, they work in integrated waste management, or they manage the operation of these, these two functions, as well as, like Ms. Beers mentioned, the reduction of some contractual services that we have vendors working for us, that we don't think will be spending as much as we did last year.
So then...
So about half of that six-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand is related to employee shifting. There's a total of six employees in the general fund that are changing their distribution to be charging out to the funds that Rubik just mentioned. So of that six-seventy-two, about three-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand is related to just the shifting of those employees out to other funds.
Three hundred.
Twenty-four thousand.
And I may have misspoken, what was the position that we're eliminating? The vacant position is how much?
Assistant Traffic Engineer is probably a hundred...
It's a ninety-six thousand dollars.
Sorry, I was wrong.
Yeah, ninety-six thousand's for that traffic engineering assistant, about three-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand is for those six individual positions that are gonna be charging out to outside enterprise funds, and the remainder is in all various contractual reductions across multiple operations.
In real word, the saving is how much?
The saving is six-hundred-and-seventy-two...
So if you're shifting from one section or department to the other, it's not...
It's a savings to the general fund, it is a cost to those funds that are receiving these, but they are working on those projects, and the projects that are within those funds have an employee component tied to them, so the money is already available for these employees to be charging there. That's the connection that, to the job.
I understand.
But to answer, but to answer Councilmember Aragajan's question, what is the true reduction?
Proposed reductions, you say, over there, it says proposed reduction.
Six-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand is the reduction for Public Works.
In general fund. You shifted from one...
In the general fund. So the actual, the actual...
Reduction, the real reduction is how much?
The actual reduction overall in the city's budget would be that one vacant position of ninety-six thousand, and the contractual services number, which is about another four-hundred or three-hundred or so thousand.
Three hundred thousand, so...
So approximately four hundred thousand.
Total.
Real reduction is four hundred thousand.
Real reduction, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Looking at the proposed resources and the appropriations as a summary, our total revenues proposed for nineteen-twenty are two-hundred-and-thirty-six million, twenty-one thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars. Factoring in the Assigned Economic Development Fund balance of six-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, our total resources proposed for nineteen-twenty are two-hundred-and-thirty-six million, six-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars. And our total appropriations proposed for nineteen-twenty are two-hundred-and-thirty-six million, nine-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars, that's nine-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars, with a projected net loss of three-hundred-and-nineteen thousand for nineteen-twenty. Factoring in what our fund balance projection is for nineteen-twenty, our projected beginning fund balance as of July one, twenty-nineteen is seventy-five point-three million, or thirty-one point-nine percent of budget. Factoring in this three-hundred-and-nineteen thousand use of fund balance to balance the nineteen-twenty budget, our projected ending fund balance as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty is seventy-five million, twenty-five, and our projected percentage is thirty-one point-seven percent. Our current policy has a reserve percentage of a floor of twenty-five percent, with a target of thirty-five, so we're, we're well within our policy. This concludes my portion of the presentation, the numerical component. Michelle will be going over the organizational profile details.
So just a couple of slides on our organizational profile. These are pretty high-level, citywide. We're looking at the total population between fiscal year twenty-eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-nineteen, twenty. We don't have the current numbers yet from the State Department of Finance, that actually comes out, I believe, tomorrow, so there's really no changes there. Our citywide employee count for full-time staffing is dropping from one-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-eight to one-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-nine. General fund goes up a little bit because of some shifting from eight-ninety-four to nine-hundred-and-three. Our total adopted budget for citywide is, for eighteen, nineteen, eight-hundred-and-eighty-eight million, and you'll see this next week for neck, for next year, proposed for nineteen-twenty is a little over nine-hundred-and-eight million. General fund, as we just talked about last year, two-hundred-and-twenty-seven point-eight million, compared to two-hundred-and-thirty-six, or almost two-hundred-and-thirty-seven million. Residents served for all funds goes up slightly from a hundred-and-twenty-nine to a hundred-and-thirty, and then slightly down in the general fund, primarily because of the shifting of staffing. And then the budget per capita, also slight increase in both between all funds, as well as the general fund. The next slide, just categorically, we've broken out the budget in various areas of public safety, public works and utilities, community development, quality of life, and administrative and internal service. And you can see some increases in the first two categories, and some decreases throughout the rest. These are all, these changes are all primarily driven because of capital improvement projects. So when those projects change or, or are in different areas, for example, if there's a large parks project going on, that will be reflected under quality of life, and if there's less the next year, then those numbers are reflected there. So this is, this gives you a little bit of a feel for kind of some of the areas that are of focus in this next budget year. And I should say, this slide, the total expenditures here does not include the transfers out, so that is why the number is slightly different than the previous slide. So it shows eight-hundred-and-seventy-nine million for next year, compared to the nine-hundred-and-eight you just saw on the previous slide. Lastly, our adoption calendar, budget adoption calendar for this year. Today, we're having our study, our first study session. We covered third-quarter update, proposed general fund budget, we looked at our five-year forecast, and a little bit of the organizational profile and forecast for what we are anticipating for next year. Next week, at the same time, at nine AM, we will have our second study session, and that will include our departmental presentations, our capital improvement program citywide, as well as any fee changes and discussions that we have for you. May fourteenth is our third study session, same time at nine AM, and we will have any follow-up items from the first two study sessions for you, and then that's when we will have our measure S discussion. May twenty-first, in the evening at the City Council meeting, we'll have our budget hearing, and two weeks later, on June fourth, again in the evening at the City Council meeting, we will adopt our budget for the next year. So that pretty much concludes our presentation this morning. We're happy to entertain any other questions you might have, or...
I just have a comment. Thank you to staff for, for this update and for the future general fund budget. I think if we learned anything today, as far as, as far as I'm concerned, I speak for myself, that I think we've really made a case for, for recommending utilizing the year-end savings that we have towards our PERS stabilization fund. I, I think that would be a, something that we, we kind of almost must do and take a step, you know, whether it's fifty percent, twenty percent, all of it, I think we have to really think about approving that kind of a, a step forward in the future. So that, those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions or comments? There's a speaker card, but let me ask for clarification on one of the items, I know you touched on it. The use of Assigned Economic Development Fund balance, what was that again?
So, a few years ago, the Economic Development Fund was a special revenue, and we collapsed that fund into the general fund, and it had a fund balance that it had accumulated through various revenues that it had generated, that we set aside in the assigned category, with, with plans of utilizing that for hourly wages in the general fund, related to economic development. And so every time we have a budget in the economic development section for hourly wages, we use that fund balance, that's, that's, we're dwindling down that fund balance towards hourly wages.
Okay. I have a speaker, Herbert Milano, for three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Najarian, members of the City Council. My name is Herbert Milano. It's been a few years since I made a presentation during the budget study sessions. I want to speak on one particular item that is of interest to me for your attention, is having to do with the quality of roads. As you look at a budget of eight-hundred-and-eighty million, figure that five percent of that, forty-four million dollars, is pretty much like the, at the top level of the things that you may want to consider. But what does a city really do with that money? Is provide us with services, safety, provide us with infrastructure, right? The sewers and the roads. And that's pretty much what all cities do as a very minimum, in providing the public with those very basic necessities, safety and infrastructure. The other things, libraries and so forth, are added by many cities to provide a better quality of life. But I will tell you this much, in the thirty-two years that I've owned property in Glendale, the roads around my property have not been reconstructed in more than forty years, in, in the alley, in more than fifty years, because they were not done by the time the building was constructed. And that is a concern to me, and it should be a concern to you for future budgets, because when the quality of the roads gets down to eighty percent, the cost of replacement quadruples is four times higher. In the CAFRA, in the back pages where you have the statistical report, you'll be able to see the ten-year trend of what the city has done with regard to road construction. The road construction not far from here, just a few blocks, I would say it's, requires significant amount of effort, and I appreciate Ms. Devine for taking care of the areas north, and really pursuing the areas between Brand Boulevard and Glendale Avenue, and between the freeway and Broadway, as a section, what used to be called the, the Gateway District of Glendale. And Doran, for example, if you drive on it, is an amazingly beautiful road, is a pleasure, it gives sort of like the quality of being in the city, what it represents. But whenever it rains, the situation gets significantly worse, and every five years, the city conducts a complete survey of all of the roads, and that report is about two inches thick, gives you road by road, the conditions of the city. This city has three-hundred-and-sixty miles of roadway, and if you just do the math, if you divide that by a twenty-year life, you can imagine how many miles of road you need to construct every single year, reconstruct. What I would like for the city to do is to pay attention in this budget, to make sure that the infrastructure of the city is taken care of, hopefully first, and then see what money is left over to deal with other issues that you have to contend with. But I would like to see, and I thank you very much, if you would pay attention to the roadways, especially the ones that have not been reconstructed in more than thirty years. Thank you very much.
Question, may, can I ask Mr. Milano what... Question, can I ask Mr. Milano, what neighborhood, are you talking about which neighborhood is your area? Is it Adams or?
Actually, right below Doran, between Glendale Avenue and Brand. For example, California Street, right over here, between Brand Boulevard and Glendale Avenue, has already begun to roll up like an old carpet, right? The conditions as you approach California and Brand is a horrific road. I mean, it's really embarrassing to even have people come over and see it. And if you want to create an identity for the city, it is my hope that having the best roadways in California would be a nice idea of becoming number one in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know this isn't the time or the place to mention this, but I know that I've asked Mr. Galanian about Adams Hill as well, and I know that we're on a phase-by-phase program, and so there are certain areas in the city that really, really do need to be looked at and improved, and I hope that we can use part of this budget to actually look at those and do something about, address those issues. So that's, thank you.
And if you recall, that was one of my points when I did take over as mayor last month, and rest assured, we will be looking at that, and we'll be giving our new Public Works Director, Mr. Emrani, a good workout in the education as to our street condition. Generally, we are in good shape. I mean, let's not get the impression that we're falling to pieces, but there's always improvements that can be done as we go through. And we'll be looking at the Public Works budget at a subsequent meeting, and we'll maybe set some priorities at that time.
If I may, if I may, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, as you mentioned, and as I am passing the baton to the new Public Works Director, I'd like to note that the citywide average pavement condition index of all of our streets within the City of Glendale, as the speaker mentioned, 360 miles, is comparatively speaking to other cities within the state at a much higher rate, much better condition. And it's been your policy decision and our focus in the last few years to repave and reconstruct and improve our major arterials that most people use as opposed to smaller streets. Not that we have ignored those streets, but as Ms. Devine mentioned, there's a phased approach to it. And we do have our updates every five years, as the speaker again mentioned, and every street, every segment of every street, all 360 miles, is surveyed and conditions are noted, and we have a five-year plan in place that Mr. Emrani will share with you and Ms. Beers as part of future budget presentations and hearings. But it hasn't been ignored, there's some challenges with that particular street. It's not, on the surface, it's not as easy to repave because of a number of things, missing gutters, and also the number of multifamily apartment buildings that are on that street make it a little challenging. But it's on the plan, it's not forgotten, as I mentioned. We have one of the best street network in the state, and we keep working on it. We do receive sales Measure R monies, future Measure M monies, as well as gas tax monies that we entirely spent on improving our street network. So it's not forgotten, but there's a method to the madness.
All right, thank you. This is a receiving file item with someone noting file.
I made a motion. To note in file.
Roll call, please.
It was a second.
Ms. Devine.
Thank you. Councilmembers Agajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned.